We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order on Monday, February 26. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Maguire?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one proposed addition, and that is adding the Destination Playground Resolution to discuss.
Okay, and we'll put that as item number 14.
Yes, and I think we're also going to add, we talked about adding, help me here, something else from the work session?
We were going to talk about the Mighty Ducks Grant.
Mighty Ducks Grant, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Those two items.
So with the two item additions, anything else to be added to the agenda or changed from the agenda? Seen and hearing done, will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second or to propose, to accept the agenda as amended? All those in favor, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to that agenda, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, consent items. Judy? I'm sorry, city clerk?
On the consent agenda, we have the items for council approval, which include the city council minutes of January 17th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of January 23rd, Rice Hospital Board minutes of January 25th, mayoral appointment of Maria Garcia to the Community Ed and Recreation Board, consideration of setting a hearing for ACMC rezone from R2 to LB and GB, consideration of setting a hearing for petition of street vacation of Third Street Southeast, accounts payable report through February 1st, accept project number 1511 and authorize final payment to GM contracting, consider amendment to professional services agreement for the 2017 projects, approve purchase of two trucks with snow removal equipment, the Planning Commission minutes of January 27th, and to accept the Human Rights Commission minutes of November 15th, the Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board meeting minutes of December 20th, the Wilmer CER Joint Powers Board meeting minutes of January 27th, border zoning appeals minutes of January 30th, building inspection report for January 2017, and the finance reports.
So those will all be under consent. Is there a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
There's just a very small correction on the ordinance to rezone ACMC. In the description of the property, it said "south of Roosevelt School." I believe it should say "south of Washington School."
Ms. DeShepper?
Okay. I would just make that.
Is that significant enough to pull, or is that?
No, we can just make that correction.
Anything else? All in favor of, I'm sorry, so this is a consent item. It'd be a motion with roll call. So because we went to the work session, there will be a number of different things that come this way. The city attorney has directed us that it must pass with six affirmative votes from the council, so a supermajority, and the mayor is not able to vote on this set items. So on the consent items from here on, the mayor will not be allowed to vote on that. So it takes six affirmative votes from council. I believe that to be correct. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, not exactly the way I would have put it, I think that the vast majority.
Put it the way you would put it.
The vast majority of things you receive on your consent agenda need to be passed by a simple majority of the council. There are occasionally going to be things that require a supermajority. If you, for example, have a resolution to accept a donation that's on your consent, there are also some possible licenses that would require a roll call vote, even though the margin of passage would still be a simple majority. So rather than try and flush it out for each individual item that might come on, I just recommended that this motion nevertheless be voted on by roll call, and then we can always be sure that each item on the consent had enough votes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meskey?
Just a clarification, a supermajority is that of the council president, present or of six total council members?
That would ordinarily be of the entire council, but it would be dependent on each individual item that might have a supermajority required.
Okay. Additional discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're doing, there's two hearings under this also, how is the public going to be aware of those?
It will be posted that the hearings are happening, so the city clerk will post those hearing notices, and that is the reason we read through the items, because generally what we would do is we'd just say there's going to be a hearing for petition street vacation of Third Street Southeast, and then, you know, I don't know that any of them have ever failed on a, on a, on a motion, and so they move forward that way. Or the council could certainly pull it and draw, draw attention to it.
Well, typically, we would explain to the public what, what the hearing is for ACMC rezoning from R2 to limited business or general business. What does that have, you know, what are we, what are we talking about there? The public should know about that, instead of just the one line reading it to them. I mean, we would do that in a typical committee meeting. We tell the people, this is what it's about, and if somebody wanted to attend, I'm assuming, is it, they get a notice also in the mail, so many feet from the, where it's happening?
People within so many feet will get notice, and it'll be in the paper. I think it's much more efficient in a committee meeting, you're lucky to have two, three people at the meeting. This way, it's actually, you know, read out loud, and it's only calling the meeting, it's not taking testimony, just setting the stage for when the actual public hearing is.
Right, but at a committee meeting, you would, we would talk about, we wouldn't just say consideration of setting a hearing, we would, we would talk about and say what it's about, and then make a motion and pass it on to the full council. Secrecy is what the public doesn't like in government.
Well, that's not, I don't, I don't believe that's the intent here. Would you like to pull those two items, so we talk about them in more depth?
Well, I think the public should be aware of them. I guess, yeah, I would, I would like it explained in layman's terms, so that the public understands what these two hearings are about. Yeah, I would move to pull E and F, just, just for a simple explanation, rather than one line. Or maybe, Megan, she raised her hand, she could.
Right. Councilmember Schwantes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd say I think that's a nice courtesy for this evening. Going forward, as we discuss these items, it'll be discussed in a work session, is that correct? And the press will be there, and the community will have an opportunity to tune into those working sessions if they choose. So that would really be very similar to a committee, but I think it's a thoughtful item for tonight.
It's a good idea. And so that, so that the council, and, well, the council's aware of it, so the public's aware of it, our work session was televised in the past, that hasn't happened, there've just been audio recordings, but tonight, it was all recorded, both audio and video, and so that will be posted on Rack 8, so for those of you that want to watch that process, you'll be able to watch that. But for tonight, we can pull those two items, and we'll have Ms. DeShepper talk about those two items. Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
It might be good to hear from her, because I believe these items have already been before the Planning Commission also, so the public has been notified and the, and the information was there.
Yeah, I think what we're doing is out of public courtesy for tonight, because we're starting a new process, so we're going to do it for tonight, and yeah, the public was invited to that, right? It has went through that public process, right? So the items, other than the two items polled, a motion to approve, I'm sorry, motion made in seconded, all those in favor of the motion to approve the items, with the exception of the two polled?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That roll call passes. Ms. DeShepper, if you could talk about those two items that were polled, please. It would be the consideration of setting a hearing for ACMC rezone from R2 to limited business and general business.
And, and just as a point of reference, that is a public hearing at Planning Commission. Everybody within 350 feet is notified for that rezone request at, at the Planning Commission level, then comes to the city council for introduction, and then at the next meeting, there'd be the public hearing. There's also a public hearing notice in the paper for both the Planning Commission and the city council, and that's by state statute, as far as, as public hearing notice is called.
Okay. So can you tell us what the, can you tell us what the, what the hearing is?
The first one is the introduction of ordinance of rezone of ACMC parcel, and that's actually a typo, there, there's no limited business, it's just general business. It's one piece of property that ACMC has acquired that's on Fifth Street Southeast. They need it for their new surgery center that's proposed, and additional parking and stormwater storage. All of the existing ACMC property is currently zoned general business, and the rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay, and if you go to the other one, please?
Petition for Third Street Southeast vacation. Calvary Lutheran Church has petition for a portion of Third Street, south of Alina Avenue and north of Alina, of 11th Avenue Southeast to be vacated. Wilmer Municipal Utilities and other private companies were notified and solicited for comments on this request. Calvary Lutheran is aware that there are utilities in the right of way, and that they will be responsible for relocation prior to their planned building additions. The Planning Commission approved the request with it being effective July 1st, as it would allow them to coordinate with the schools for the next busing cycle for the new school year. Stop signs, signs would also be added at 11th Avenue and Alina Avenue. And also with the street vacation, we notify everyone within 600 feet of that property, and that'll be at the next, when you guys hold the hearing, that's when those notifications will be mailed out.
Council, what do you wish to do? To approve items E and F? I'm sorry?
I'd move to approve items E and F on the agenda.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve items E and F on the consent agenda. Discussion.
Do you need a second?
Roll call.
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion passes as well. Next, we have the public hearing, amending ordinance rezoning from shopping center to general business for Rockstep Capital. So, Ms. DeShepper?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, AutoZone proposes constructing on a, on an auto parts store on the proposed subdivided lot. Autoparts stores are permitted use in the general business district. As the land is being parceled off from the large candy mall parcel, rezoning is appropriate and in keeping with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. The rezoning was approved by the Planning Commission. Staff recommends that ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Go ahead, yep, go ahead, yep, go ahead and state your name and address.
All right. Hi, I'm Pete Moreau. I live at 5600 Camerata Way in St. Louis Park, Minnesota, and I work for CEI Engineering, who's, did the civil engineering plans for the AutoZone store. But I think Megan explained exactly what we were aiming for with the rezoning, and I have no further comment unless there's any questions about the proposed development, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? With that, we'll close the public hearing, move to the council table. Council, what do you wish to do?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the zoning ordinance rezoning from shopping center, center to general business for Rockstep. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is open forum, Ms. Suquest. Do we have the timer again, sir?
I was just going to look for that. I'll say my name in the meantime, Suquest, 1451 Hanson Drive, Southwest Wilmer. Is the timer going on?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Calvin, and members of the city council. For the past two years, the West Central Dubuin and Moving Wilmer Forward promoted an image that our former city council was dysfunctional. Well, last week, I attended the EDC Joint Powers Meeting. EDC Director Aaron Bachman presented numerous reports that shattered their biased opinion. The EDC staff, the EDC Joint Powers and its operation board did a phenomenal job, serving the best interests of our citizens and communities. The EDC spent significantly less than their projected budget, music to the taxpayers' ears. New retail businesses will be opening in the near future, and there's a potential of an agricultural industry being established here, too. More tax revenue and employment opportunities being, brings growth and gives our children an opportunity to live and raise their families here. A long time ago, has been transmitting our region with broadband. We received $4.9 million grant for broadband, the largest amount given in our state. Our local elected state officials, the EDC staff, the Joint Powers Board, the EDC Operation Board, and the broadband committee deserve our gratitude. At this EDC Joint Powers Meeting, a concern arose that needs to be addressed here. The board only meets four times a year, and consists of three county commissioners and three city council members. That being said, one would think any member from either government body would prioritize attending these meetings or elect not to be on it. Disturbing thing is, the three designated members representing the city council did not attend themselves. Two had fellow members take their place, and one seat was left open. From speaking with the city council member, he was not aware that he had the responsibility to find a replacement. Mayor Calvin, whose duty is it to orientate newly elected members to the city council? Numerous times, you have expressed your desire to be in control. I think an information meeting would have been helpful, if it was held prior to the newly elected and current city council members offering their names to be on a particular committee, it would best serve them, the board or committee, and the city of Wilmer. Had vital information like how often a group meets, when, how long, what his or her responsibilities are, would, would make them have that decision made, after they reflected on family commitments, work expectations, health issues, or planned vacations. They may have decided not to be on a specific committee, or not as many. Finding a substitute when a need arises is also an important protocol. Because one seat was vacant and three seats were substitutes, it wasn't feasible to elect officers. One of the two candidates representing the city for the operation board, oh, shoot, thank you anyway.
There's a fire alarm. Yeah. Next is consideration of resolution adopting the city work council sessions. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Pursuant to direction at the last council meeting, I worked with staff and the mayor to prepare a draft resolution for you to consider, which would formally make the change from your subcommittee process that you had up until this current council was seated, to a council work session structure. And obviously, you've now had the example of one work session to fall back on and rely on as you look at this resolution. But the purposes of this resolution is really just to create some procedures and guidelines that the council has buy-in for, and get council and staff on the same page for how the work sessions are going to work, and how, you know, what the implications are for your regular meetings, once you go to work sessions. And I guess what I direct your attention to would be in the resolution in paragraph three at the bottom of the first page, which continues then through page two and the top of page three. These are.
Mr. Scott, for council, if you're looking on your iPads, it's on page 186, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Looking at paragraph three of the draft resolution, these are definitely suggestions that staff and myself came up with for some procedures and guidelines for you to establish for your work sessions. You should definitely treat this as such, and feel free to make changes to these guidelines, make additions to them if you think there's something missing. But just to walk through it really quickly, paragraph three A basically just states the principle that I think everyone is on the same page with already, that the expectation of the council is that except for very routine or uncontroversial matters, everything's going to come to the council first at a work session. Things that would have come to your committees before are now going to come to your work sessions preceding your regular meetings. The paragraph three B, now at the top of page two, sticks with, I think, council direction, that the preference of the council and the expectation is that things that are presented at your work sessions aren't going to then be requested of the council, that you give formal approval for them until the regular meeting following the next work session, so that the idea would be there would always be at least a two-week lag time in between matters presented at work session and the requested formal action of the council. I did want to make that somewhat flexible, so that because things are not always able to be predicted, and every once in a while, things do come forward that need more urgent action, that there would be a procedure for the council to basically waive that requirement and act on them at the regular meeting immediately following a work session. The last sentence in paragraph three B there would allow the council to do this by affirmative vote of six council members. That would essentially just be waiving your requirement that there'd be the two-week lag time. That's a recommendation, it's an idea for you to consider. If you think that's too rigid, you could reduce that number to five, or just a simple majority. That's, I'm putting it out there for your consideration, though, that's one idea, to try and strike the balance between making sure that things are properly vetted and giving yourself the flexibility to act on items in those circumstances where you, it's just you don't have that kind of time. Paragraph three C simply states the requirement and the expectation of the council that you're not going to be taking formal action on agenda items in work sessions. Work sessions are for discussion only, they're for the council to identify, work with staff, identify what information the council will need to take final action in a couple of weeks, request additional information if there's something the council feels was missing. Paragraph three D, now in the middle of page two, deals with the types of issues that would not necessarily need to come to a work session, that could then just show up on your council agenda for the consent items. And the idea isn't that it would be a lot broader than the way you've used your consent agenda before, but there would be some items that might come straight onto consent that would not have shown up in your consent agenda before, that would need a lot of vetting in your work sessions. And I guess the important point there is if any council member feels that an item isn't as routine as staff thought it was, or isn't as uncontroversial and wants to pull it off consent, any individual member can do that under this procedure in paragraph D, and then it would be up to the council, once it's removed from consent, to decide whether it needs to go back to a future work session or not. Paragraphs E and F, E is just stating what the council's decided, that it's going to be videotaping your work sessions and then putting them on the city's website, and playing them on tape delay on Rack 8. And then paragraph F is simply a, kind of a logistical piece for staff, really, to make sure that it's clear that, once you've adopted this resolution, assuming you do, your work sessions will be considered regular meetings for purposes of the open meeting law, meaning you're not going to have to do a special meeting notice every time you have a work session. It's just expected, then, that every time you have a regular meeting at 7:00, you're going to have a work session at 5:15 preceding that, and individual notices won't be necessary. Like I said, this is intended for council consideration and discussion, and certainly feel free to offer changes or additions to this suggested list of guidelines for you to consider for your work sessions.
Thank you. Council, what do you wish to do? Congress, we could have a motion in a second, then we can discuss it.
I'd move to approve the ordinance, is that what it is?
Resolution.
Resolution has printed.
Second.
Motion made in second, and councilmember Meskey.
Well, one thing I would just say, I think this is actually fairly well thought out. On E, I'd say we're restricting ourselves to current technology. Having a cable cast on W on Rack 8, I think is fine. On tape delay is what we're using currently, but that may not be the case later, and so I would just recommend the removal of on taped delay.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a question, did we have a resolution forming our subcommittees prior to this?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Christensen, you had resolutions making your appointments to the committees, but in asking staff if there are any record of the subcommittees being created, I didn't see that there was a resolution spelling out your procedures.
I didn't think so, and I've been on the council quite a while. The, the subcommittees have been used, I don't know when they were started, but long prior to me being on the council. I don't like the idea of number two in place of pre-existing, we're going to completely get rid of the work sessions. My understanding at the retreat was that we were going to try this for six months. I understood that to be the idea, and then decide whether or not, this is the route we want to go. We have three new council members who have never worked under the present committee structure that we've had, and I know that four of us spoke at the retreats, kind of hesitating whether or not we should do this, but we said we would try it. And so to pass a resolution on this, I, I would speak against that. I mean, I don't think we need a resolution. We can have some formal paragraphs on here stating what we're going to do, but we did not have that on the, on the subcommittees either that we used for the last 30, 40 years. So I don't know if a resolution is necessary unless the object of that is to completely get rid of those subcommittees, which I'm against, because we may want to go back to them someday. I, and I know it states in there that you can do it, but it's probably going to take a, a supermajority again to do that, to get rid of this, but I don't think we need a resolution to do this. We, we talked about trying it, and we tried it prior to this council meeting, and, you know, it, it went pretty good. We didn't, we weren't able to finish all the topics that were on the agenda, and I suspect to be more at our other work session meetings, there's going to be more and more items that come to, come to us, to stick on a consent agenda for the following meeting. But I would speak against a resolution doing this. I say, let's just try this for six months, and then see how it works, and then those of us that have worked under the subcommittee structure can, we can compare it to what's going on, on the, in these work sessions. Because I'm a, I'm in favor of the subcommittees, but I did say I would try it for six, six months, and I speak against the resolution. I think we should try this, and then determine whether or not we need a resolution, you know, in whatever October, or whatever six months is from today. I just don't think we should get rid of those subcommittees just because of this resolution.
Councilmember Meskey?
I actually would say on item number one, under the, be it resolved, I didn't see that before, and, and under number one, and disbanded, I would strike that, so it says, and shall be discontinued for a six-month period of time, because that is what we talked about. The resolution, I think, is important as we proceed through this process, because there are no rules of discussing how to do it. And so I have no problem with having a resolution, but having a clear reentry date, which is what number one really eliminates with and disbanded, to change that to say for a six-month period, I think. period, I think, might alleviate some of that concern. And I guess I would move to amend this, to strike "and disbanded" and include "for a six-month period," and as well as dropping on tape delay on item E.
Is the secondor willing to accept that?
This is what?
The person who seconded it willing to accept that amendment, so we don't have to make a formal amendment, make it a friendly amendment? That's what you want to do, right? Friendly amendment?
Oh, I didn't do that, but...
Would you like to make a formal amendment?
Sure, I can, yeah, we'll see if they would go for it.
Who made the second?
Oh, Julie. I'm fine with those, with the friendly amendment.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll speak against it. I think we did have a conversation about trying this, but to put six months out there, if it's working, why would we stop at six months? If it's not working, we can do a new motion to undo this. So why are we putting a timeframe in this when, it's just something else we have to come back to? So I think we've got to give it a try. I think it was evident tonight that we can get information from the different committees, as they were before, and I don't think we need the committee structure right now, and I don't think we need the six months.
Councilmember Mesky.
I would argue, if we're going to make a significant change and do away with our committee structure, that we probably would want to have the entire council on board with the plan. That's why, if this, if that move would make a unanimous decision of this council, I think that's what we should strive to do, because we are changing our orders of operation.
Isn't...
Councilmember Nelson.
Isn't that what we discussed last meeting and instructed the city attorney to come back with?
We were quite divided in that, and that's, then we're divided over these very issues of, there's a hesitancy to go forward, to do it. We can revisit it in six months if it's working, and you would still have to revisit it anyway to remove the, for six months, and then we're, then we're using it. It's just something that formalizes the piece and has an intentional six-month revisiting. I don't think it changes the spirit that we're trying to operate under.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had talked about six-month trial, and I'm for that. If you don't have a timeframe in there, someone could bring it up every other week. Let's get rid of it. So this says to me, we're trying it for six months, we'll analyze it after six months and see if we want to continue or not.
So we have two amendments, friendly amendments.
No, I'm...
It is listed as one? Okay.
With two corrections.
Two corrections. And staff understands what the corrections are? Are we ready to vote?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, so it's a roll call.
Yeah.
We're not voting on the friendly amendment.
No, friendly amendment's in. So, Mr. Scott, go through with what we changed from what's written here, if it's clear.
Okay. I now understand the motion with the friendly amendment to be in paragraph one, rather than stating that the subcommittees are going to be discontinued and disbanded. It now reads, the committees will be discontinued for a six-month period of time. In paragraph three E, where we had stated that the work sessions would be cable cast and rack eight on tape delay, it now reads it will simply be cable cast on rack eight. And with that, you're voting on the motion with those amendments already incorporated into the motion.
Counsel understands what you're voting on. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution does pass. Next is a consideration of Swanson Field concession restroom facility. Mr. Brizendine.
Calvin, members of the council, before you is a request to enter into a...
Just a minute, Steve. Could you put the matrix up again, please? Thank you.
Before you is a request to allow staff to enter into two agreements, one with City's Edge Architects for $13,300, and the other one for SRF Consulting Group in the amount of $9,726 for professional services related to the development and construction of a concession and restroom facility on North Swanson near the Orange Baseball Field. These agreements will allow for work to take place in planning for that facility to be built. Our timeline for getting that work done is hopefully no later than mid-July, to be able to host a state VFW baseball tournament to take place the first week in August. I believe by enlisting these services, the preliminary work can get done quite quickly, and we can get this project ready to be bid, so it can get on construction schedules ASAP.
Counsel, what do you wish to do?
I'll enter that motion, your staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve staff's recommendation of preparing bids and specs for the restroom facilities and field concessions at Swanson Field. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, it's just the concessions and bath building.
That's what this project is, yes.
And there's not, there is enough room between first base fence and the road?
Yes.
Existing road to be constructed there?
Yeah, and where it's, yes, where it's located, it'll be north of the dugout area, so sightlines to the field will, will be there for the workers of the concession stand.
Okay, thank you.
So as it's shown there, it might slide a little bit to the north.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Alvarado, I'm having computer issues here, I'm playing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I'm concerned, is there going to be like some sort of netting or something for foul balls, or is there going to be a distance between that building and the field that are...
Currently, there's a fence between there, so I anticipate that fence staying there.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
Would it be possible for, for the public to see where that building is located? Could you show it to them like you did to us in the work session, please?
No, I'd like to not do...
You can't, you can't see it on the video. Oh, really? Yeah. It's better to do it this way.
See that?
Yep.
It's hard to see it on the video, though, Steve, if you could, if I, if I could inconvenience you.
He hasn't brought the screen over either.
It wasn't on the screen before. Might I point to it again?
Hey, go ahead, try it again. Technology is good, as long as we get, as long as we keep up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Okay, so here, seeing and hearing done, all in, simple motion, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next is consideration of, you, I'm sorry. Councilmember Mesky, you have some voice calls here that we'd like to introduce?
Well, I just said that we usually do, and then I think they're working on our communication merit badge, so I think...
Perfect.
Nice for them to come up and introduce themselves.
So if you could come up and introduce yourself, we'd love to address you. So if you tell us what pack you're with, and where you meet, and then your names, and who your parents are.
Matthew Wees, Troop 227, and we attend St. Mary's.
Thank you.
Parents?
Avery Losso.
Parents.
Huh?
Parents.
Who are your parents?
Dan and Lisa Wees.
Avery Losso, parents are Eric and Sarah Losso.
Hi, I'm Riley Zammert. My parents are Donovan and Carla Zammert.
I am Devin Jenkins, and my parents are Dan Jenkins and Teresa Bowman.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So you can stick through the meeting as long as you want. We're on item number 12, and we have 15 items, and so the rest of the meeting is going to be really exciting, so you probably want to stick around. So, thank you for being here, thank you for working on your badges, and I apologize for not introducing you at the beginning of the meeting. So, thank you, Councilmember Mesky and Councilmember Nelson for pointing it out to me, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Glad you're here. Next, we have consideration of USTA Tennis Court Construction Grant. Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, there is a USTA grant that would allow us to get some resources available to improve Miller Park tennis courts. The grant is due February 13th, and we're requesting the ability to write a grant. The amount is between the $10,000 and $15,000 range, is what we've been in conversations with the USTA about.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our work session prior to this council meeting, we were advised, I believe by Mr. Brizendine, that we should refuse this in hopes of getting a bigger grant.
Two different ones. This is the tennis court, this is not the Mighty Ducks.
Okay.
We're going to apply for this one.
Okay.
Councilmember Asmus, did you want to make some comments about this?
No.
Okay. Well, you made some very good comments at the work session, so. There's also a possibility that this could be forwarded to a $50,000 grant, and so this is just kind of step one, and it may go to $50,000 instead of the 15, so. A roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we will receive the 2017 Improvement Report and order the improvement hearing. Mr. Christensen. Counsel, you have the packets in front of you at your workstation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the car form states, the recommended action of the council tonight is to adopt the resolution to receive the report, which I will give momentarily, and also for the 2017 improvements, and also order the improvement hearing, which the date I'm recommending is March 6, 2017, at the beginning of that council meeting. In accordance with Chapter 429 of Minnesota State Statutes, an improvement report is required to be formally received, and an improvement hearing is required to be ordered by the city council for the 2017 improvement projects. The hearing explains the proposed improvements and allows the public comments to be received. 2017 improvements include the street and utility construction in several locations throughout the city. The areas were selected based on a five-year CIP, as well as input from engineering staff and municipal utilities commission. Sources of the funds for the 2017 improvement projects includes money from municipal utilities, assessments, federal and state aid funds, and bond proceeds. The estimated total cost of the 17 improvements is $3,450,000. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll present the report as, as it was provided to you beginning of the meeting. As stated required by the Minnesota State Statute 429, Public Works Director hereby submits to the city council, the city will remember the following preliminary report for the 2017 street and other improvements. 2000 street improvements include reconstruction, reconstruction of 16th Street Southwest from 13th Avenue Southwest to Wilmer Avenue Southwest, 17th Street Southwest from 15th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue, and 13th Avenue Southwest from 17th Street to 16th Street. Also includes a 19th Street Northwest from Trunk Highway 12 to Gorton Avenue. Under new path construction, we have Lakeland Drive Southeast. This travels three, from 300 foot south of Olina Avenue to Trunk Highway 12. For those of you wondering where the 300 feet lies, that takes you to the school property of the new, of the new grade school. This pathway will also travel from, along Trunk Highway 12, from Lakeland Drive Southeast to 23rd Street Southeast. So from Lakeland to the Casey's store there, in front of the chamber. Also be a new path, a short section of path on 23rd Street Southeast from Sunrise Park Lot to the new elementary school path. So it'll cross 23rd Street and go along an existing right-of-way there to the crossing on that Branch Three. Other street improvements include overlays, overlay on Lakeland Drive Southeast from Wilmer to Trunk Highway 12, an overlay on 17th Street Northwest from Gorton to Ella, and from Ella Avenue Northwest from 17th Street to 7th Street. Under miscellaneous items, this year we have First Street, along First Street, we have Batumina surfacing and signal system upgrades at Wilmer Avenue and Litchfield Avenue intersections. I give the total estimated cost for the project, as I mentioned before, $3,450,000. Of that, the assessments are just under $1,513,560, and the estimated city share of that total Projects are presented are feasible and can be substantially completed during the 2017 construction season. The Public Works Director recommends that the project be constructed as proposed, and that a public hearing be held by the city council in accordance with requirements of Chapter 429 of the State of Minnesota statutes, and that the meeting be held, the public hearing be held March 6, 2017.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt the resolution to receive the improvement report for 2017 improvements and order the improvement hearing for March 6, 2017 at 7:01 PM.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. The only thing I'd ask is to make sure we have the PowerPoint for the public hearing, if we could, please.
Thank you, members of the council, the PowerPoint is being constructed as we speak, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Fagerly.
Don't go yet.
Sorry.
The walking path, 23rd Street to Sunrise Park, did you come up with a plan, then?
We've got a, yes, we've got a, I would say, about 60% design on that at this point.
Because the last that I heard, we were going to wait till the school is open and see what the traffic pattern of the kids would be. So is this going to be on the west side or east side of 23rd Street?
It's going to start on the east side, where the existing path is, and then cross 23rd to the west side, missing driveways, and getting to the right-of-way that's on the, that runs from 23rd to the Branch Three of the...
So you're starting at Casey's and going...
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking Sunrise Park at the south end of that, of that path.
Well, it says Sunrise Park Lot, so you're talking about the parking lot?
Correct. Right. Just north of that parking lot, there's an...
And then go north?
Only to the existing right-of-way that is, that goes into the school.
Okay, so you're going to go on Mrs. Wilson's property, the townhouses there?
Nope. There's a city right-of-way that's there, I think would be south of that property.
But how are they going to cross the street, then?
We're going to have a crosswalk, zebra, probably zebra stripe crossing right there. It'll angle across...
Because the kids aren't going to use it. Trust me.
They, right. I don't disagree, but the crosswalk will, will be there per requirements of, of, of the pathway and ADA requirements.
So then it'll go to the north on Welsh and...
No, I think, I think where the confusion factor is, if I may, is just two sections of path. One of them ends at the north end of 23rd Street, at Casey's. The other one...
No, it doesn't go that far.
Correct. The other one only runs from the park to the school.
Yeah.
So there is nothing along 23rd Street.
No. So there's nothing planned for 23rd Street?
Not this construction season, that's correct.
It's just, at the parking lot of Sunrise Park, you're going to go across the street with a striped crosswalk.
Correct. Correct, and-
And then a little pathway up to the existing entrance where the culvert is.
That's right, that's correct.
Okay, so it's gotta go on somebody's property, they aren't gonna be on the street walking.
Correct, it'll be in front of people's property because it'll be within city right-of-way.
Okay, and it's gonna be asphalt, it's not gonna be concrete.
That's correct.
Okay, what we really need is the Sunrise Park path to be resurfaced, there's so many cracks.
We can add that to the list.
Okay.
Maybe for another year.
Yeah, it'd be much appreciated, so.
Okay.
And then Lakeland Drive overlay, is the heavy equipment gonna be done on that street for the new school by then, or is it gonna get all busted up?
No, the intent was, in fact, past plans actually showed that overlay on Lakeland Drive to be in the either fifteen or sixteen construction, we pulled that from those years because of the construction of the school, so the intent is for that heavy construction to be done, add the turn lanes and add the overlay to, to accommodate that school.
So the school should be done in May or June?
That would be a great question to ask the school.
Okay, because I don't want to see the street-
No, it-
-overlaid and then busted up.
In all seriousness, I agree that if we have to delay the overlay until later in the fall to accommodate the end of that construction, we will do that.
But then when you do that and school started and the janitors are gonna call and say, "Don't do it because tar will be tracked and-"
We'll have to-
They did on Seventh Street.
Yeah, we'll have to do some scheduling there, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Elvareto.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have an update on the destination playground, I'll start with Mr. McGuire and go to the city attorney and then we'll follow up any questions from there. McGuire.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working on this for several months, actually several months before I was even here, and we finally put together a resolution, I think everyone agrees with, there's a few details to work out, but this would allow us to accept the initial donation totaling two hundred thousand dollars. City Attorney has been working with the foundation attorney and I'll defer to him to go through it.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is obviously a community-funded effort to raise the funds necessary to construct a destination playground at Robins Island. You have, maybe the place to start with your resolution, an exhibit to the resolution, supposed to be Exhibit A, shows the site plan for what the playground would look like at Robins Island, that I believe has been developed by the foundation that's raising the, or, excuse me, that is administering the funds that have been raised through private donations in conjunction with city staff. The resolution before you is a resolution to simply accept a cash donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation, and again, the foundation is administering the funds that private citizens and businesses have donated to fund the destination playground project. It is anticipated that there will be subsequent donations made and thus subsequent resolutions before you to accept the donations as the project progresses. I know that the foundation and the members of the public that have been planning this project are continuing to refine their plans and identify all the equipment that's needed for the project, all the services that will be needed, and making sure that funds sufficient to cover one hundred percent of those costs are donated to the city. There's a preliminary list of equipment that has been identified that will need to be acquired for the project, that's set forth on your Exhibit B. The idea with this resolution, the city is accepting the donation from the foundation in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. It is committing to purchase equipment and supplies and services needed for the project up to that amount, including the equipment listed on Exhibit B. I do believe the amount being donated at this point is going to be at least slightly in excess of what's necessary to purchase equipment on Exhibit B, so the resolution contains some conditions on the city's accepting the donation, which simply state that all funds donated in this donation that you're accepting have to be spent for this project. Have to be spent either for equipment, materials, or supplies, or for services. The city will be authorized to work with the consultant that has been advising the community group, Leathers and Associates, I think they've done a lot of the planning for what the components of this project will be. So as the city moves forward towards an eventual community build date that they're targeting for May of this year, the city will be purchasing the equipment and supplies as identified by not only Leathers and Associates but the members of the community group and a sort of ad hoc committee that the council would be directing to be formed here in Paragraph Two that, as it stands, would include the mayor, councilmember Schwantes, the city administrator, the city engineer, and the community education and recreation director. This is all pursuant to a statute which governs when cities and how cities are to accept private donations, and it requires that all conditions on the funds be stated in the resolution, and that's what this resolution does in Paragraph One. The recommendation at this point would be that the city council pass this resolution accepting the two hundred thousand dollar donation, or the purchase of the materials and supplies listed and others identified as necessary for the project, and again, the expectation is this is the first of what I expect will actually be several resolutions as the foundation is ready to move forward and make subsequent donations for additional purchases for this project.
Okay, so we have the resolution in front of us, counsel, what is your desires?
I'll make a motion that we accept and approve the resolution as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept the resolution as presented, discussion. As the mayor, I just want to say this is a fabulous project, this is really fun to be involved in. The community involvement, and you'll notice the number of two hundred thousand in this, I've been sitting at the table, this number is much, much larger than two hundred thousand, but this is the first step, as the city attorney has told us, of many resolutions that will be coming before us. The work of our residents in getting behind this project, the hundreds of volunteers that are already involved in the project, and the generous outpouring of our community is just out of this world, I just can't believe how generous of a community we have. Looking forward to this new project, we talked park plan earlier, our original park plan called for a two hundred thousand dollar playground, this playground will be well in excess of that, and I believe the numbers that are out there, Councilmember Schwantes, maybe you want to share some of the numbers that are out, the numbers are pretty staggering, so.
Approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, that would include in-kind donations in addition to the hard assets.
So, so all of that will be coming back through us, so as you see, you know, the numbers out there, about nine hundred thousand that we've got in on this project already, and, and so this is two hundred thousand, it's the first step is what we've said, so I'm excited to move this and see this project move forward, so. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Elvareto.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes, good work. Next, we have a conversation from Mr. Brizendine for the council to consider rejecting the Mighty Duck grant that we talked about in work session. Counsel, Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, if you may. The council, last fall, you approved staff writing a grant to the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission for help with the change out of the refrigeration system at the Civic Center. We did receive notification that we were awarded a grant, the grant amounted to fifty thousand dollars per sheet of ice for a hundred thousand dollar total. That grant has timelines to be met, it was staff's hope that when we wrote the grant that the local option sales tax initiative would have passed and we'd have had a funding for, source for the two point four million dollar refrigeration project at the Civic Center of which this would offset the cost by one hundred thousand dollars. Today, we do not have that source of revenue, thus it's staff's recommendation to turn back this grant to the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission in hopes of potentially reapplying for future grants when funds have been identified to do the Civic Center refrigeration project. Stand for questions.
Councilmember Mesky. I'll ask the question before I know the answer, but just so the general public hears it. Can we get a motion and a second? Sure. I would move to go with staff's recommendation of returning the grant for the Mighty Duck project. Second. Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Mesky. Again, I already know the answer, but Mr. Brizendine, could you explain to the public that that, sending this grant back in no way, shape, or form will jeopardize our application for a future grant?
In conversations with staff at the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, they have told me in so many words that this would not hinder any future grant applications for us to apply for this work in the future.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nelson.
I think it might be helpful for you to restate also, we were supposed to send a letter of acceptance, and that letter of acceptance would say how we, how and when we were going to do something and we're not able to do that, is that correct?
Right, to accept this grant, a letter of assurances would have had to been made to the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, tying us into completing this refrigeration project by the deadline in the grant, and that deadline was 2017. I did not see that as a possibility for us as the funding is not in the 2017 budget, so thus why you have the recommendation before you that you do.
Okay, just, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, can you explain to the council what we'll do when the system fails, because it's gonna fail sooner than later? We can't get parts, and I don't know if there's enough duct tape out there.
We're hoping there is enough duct tape or at least parts that we can manage the system. There have been glitches in the system, last year we spent a little over twenty thousand dollars to rejuvenate a chiller that broke down. There is refrigerant available, it's becoming costlier by the year. We do believe that the maintenance work that has been done by staff in the past has allowed this system to stay operational. When you've got moving parts, you never know how long equipment is going to last. When Stevens Engineering did the original study for us on our facility, they talked about a five-year window of this facility still being manageable, that would have put us out in 2020, so we believe that we're still possibly on borrowed time, but nonetheless, the facility is, has got good equipment and it will stay operational, but there are no guarantees with a piece of equipment that's thirty-six years old.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just one more question, are you planning to put it in the 2018 budget, is that the plan right now, or what is the plan?
I hope that that will be a work session discussion with the council. Currently, when staff did last year's 2016 five-year CIP, 2018 is the year that it is in the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of rejecting the Mighty Ducks grant as proposed by staff for the following reasons, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. With that, there's no further business to come before the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we adjourned.